Kerry Dever, you want to leave us off on the pledge?
I just have to apply of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Commissioner Heiburger is actually absent today, so I'm going to be chairing. I know we have Commissioner Benega is present by telephone. Hi Gerald.
Hi Gerald, how are you?
Good, thanks. Hey, we're going to be doing everything by roll call because we do have Gerald calling in and pursuant to state law, that's the way we have to do things, that we're going to have people calling in. So, remind everyone, please, to silence your cellphone so we don't disrupt the business. And there are meeting documents available for everybody's review in the white binder. And if there's anybody that needs any help with any listening devices, please feel free to contact Robert, sitting right over here. Item number one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
There is.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll let Cindy call the roll.
Commissioners Kelly?
Here, aye. Yes, whatever.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes. So, 4-0, it is approved. Item number two is approval of the county commission minutes of November 25th, 2014. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the bill, of the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. I'll let the roll be called.
Commissioners Kelly?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes. 4-0, once again, passed unanimously. Item number three are bills to be paid in the amount of $417,317.85.
Pay the bills.
Thank you. There's a motion. And a second from Commissioner Benega. Once again, we'll call the roll.
Kelly?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye. Passes, 4-0. Item number four are reports. A is the auditor's office report of the sale of surplus auction. The net sale amount is $12,227.19. That's available for review at the auditor's office. Item number five are personnel actions. A is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
I'll make that motion.
And Ms. Dever is here today. She's coming up. And we have a motion from, we have a motion from Commissioner Kelly and a second from Commissioner Barth. You have to be faster than that Gerald.
Aye.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll.
Kelly?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes. So we have a 4-0. Great argument Kerry. So, item B, recognize significant employee anniversaries for December 2014. Ms. Dever.
Good morning. Kerry Dever from Human Resources. It's my pleasure to recognize or ask for your recognition of several employees who are celebrating fairly significant employee anniversaries this month. Normally, we have a collection of five-year anniversaries for you, but this year, or this month, you can see that we've got 10 to 30 years. And we start with Mary Yu, who's an administrative secretary at the sheriff's office, celebrating 10. Ray Coens at Human Services, who's celebrating 15. Mel Sanner, Karen Wager, who are both with the Equalization Department, celebrating 25 years of service. Becca McChesney with the Treasurers Office, celebrating 25. And Larry Bachen with the Equalization Office, celebrating 30 years. And we have three of these individuals in the audience today. If you want to come forward and say a few words, this would be a great time.
Yeah.
Well, stand up anyway.
Yeah, please stand up and be recognized. Wonderful.
Eighty years of experience with just three people, isn't that incredible?
Phenomenal institutional memory. Thank you, everybody. If it wasn't for our institutional memory, I think we'd be lost and adrift at sea. Thank you. Yep.
The next item I have for you is to recognize volunteers and county government for November 2014. A list again of well over 200. I think it's technically 226 volunteers serving in many departments throughout the county. So we want to ask for your recognition and appreciation of those individuals.
Absolutely. I think Carol Tweed said it best, nothing beats harder than the, stronger than the heart of a volunteer. That's true.
The next item I have for you is to consider a motion to approve administrative services agreement with Horizons. This is a kind of a pattern. This is the second or third one that you've seen over the last few months, and you'll see another one next week as well. There are several groups that help us administer our self-insured health insurance plan. Horizons helps us with the network. Good news this year is that they're not proposing an increase to their per employee per month fee for the next three years. So that'll be flat for three more years.
All right. Okay, so, we do have to consider a motion to approve those administrative services. So, the chair will entertain a motion.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Kelly?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye. Passes, 4 to 0. Thanks Kerry. Item E is to consider a motion to approve a one-time lump sum payment for staff members at the maximum of the salary range. And this actually was discussed earlier. So, let's go ahead and have Kerry do her presentation.
One thing I'd like to stress about this item is the only reason I'm bringing it forward for your consideration is that we're doing something unique with our compensation program next year. Normally, you look at moving the matrix each year to reflect some figure that you feel is appropriate. You take into consideration cost of living, cost of labor, different issues with recruitment, to make a determination about how much you should move that matrix. This year, we're not doing that. This year, instead, people are progressing a step on the plan. You have 17 staff members who are at the maximum rate of the range. Eleven of those staff members have been maxed out for at least a year or more. And what that means is those people have not had a raise at all in 2014 and will not in 2015 because of this unique one-time structure change that we're having. I'm asking your consideration and recognition that those people have not and will not receive a raise for two years, to consider giving them a lump sum payment of $500 at the same time that everybody else's or adjustments are effective in January 2015. Again, one-time lump sum, not longevity pay, not a continuing issue. Wanted to be very clear that it's unique because of the structure change, but I'm proposing it because I think it deserves some recognition that these individuals have not had an increase. Small amount, small nominal amount that I'd ask your consideration to approve.
Thank you Kerry. Are there any questions for Ms. Dever this morning? Go ahead, Dick.
Kerry, when was the last time we had a general increase?
We did have a general increase coming into this year. Over the last, yes, over the last five to six years, though, the most that you've moved the matrix, in fact, the total that you've moved the matrix is 1.7% increase. We've had some of these staff have been maxed out for five or six years, and that's the only amount that they've received as far as an adjustment, 1.7% in five years.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Dever? Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chair, I just am making a comment. I think that, you know, we do really value our employees and, you know, we are under a pretty tight budget and, at the same time, we have a chance to show our good faith with them on this issue and the fact that they're not forgotten. So I look forward to passing this.
Thank you. Gerald, do you have any comments?
The only comment that I would have would be in reference to how smoothly the union negotiations and the conversations went this year and how cooperative both sides became in finding a solution with very tight budgets. So I think that everybody in the organization needs to be recognized and by doing this, we certainly have addressed that.
Well, what's interesting is Ken McFarland always says, "The county's adept at turning limp balls into sweaters." And this is another case where administration, the union, our employees, they've all been part of this process. So thank you for your comments Gerald. With that being said, I think we're going to need a motion.
I'll make that motion. Second.
I think we have a motion and a second. And I'm going to let Cindy call the roll.
Kelly?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye. Passes, 4 to 0. Thank you Kerry.
Thank you.
Item number six are applications for abatement. We don't have any this morning. Item number seven are notices and requests. The first is, it's going to be a first reading to authorize the county auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider text amendments to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance related to Article 7.04. NAC Scott's here. Hi Scott.
Good morning. Scott Anderson, Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning. And today, as you indicated, I'm asking for a hearing date to be set of January 6th, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. This would be for a zoning text amendment which would add a conditional use to our light industrial zoning district. And that new conditional use would be salvage and junkyard. And this would be, as I indicated, a conditional use, so any salvage yard or junkyard that would like to be located in that light industrial district would still have to go through a hearing process. And we would determine the appropriateness of the proposed use. But at this juncture, today, we're just setting the hearing date for January 6th, and then the public is certainly welcome to make comments on the 6th, and we'll have a question and answer from the commission, but I'd be glad to answer your questions you have today.
Anybody have any questions for Scott this morning?
What is the situation right now? I mean, what?
Right now, they are only allowed in heavy industrial district or the general industrial district, and not, it's not permitted at all in any other district. And we have a citizen that would like to begin operations of a salvage yard in an I-2, a light industrial zoning district, so he has requested to amend the zoning ordinance.
Can you tell us the difference between the light industrial and heavy?
Well, the heavy industrial district really is set up to handle much more heavy uses like salvage yards or foundries, refineries, those type of uses where it's a little bit more intense. And the light industrial district, you can have some general manufacturing. It allows for some lighter uses, but still related to industrial manufacturing uses in general.
This is still a conditional, will be a conditional use, so the planning commissioner has an opportunity to look at what's around and?
Planning Commission has opportunities to look around. The neighbors get informed. There's a public hearing. The, each use would be judged on its site plan and its proposed scope of activities, and we look at all of that to make a determination on the suitability of that specific use in that specific location.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead. Commissioner Barth?
Scott, do we have any heavy industrial zoned areas in the county right now?
Yes, we do.
Okay, could you give us an example?
Well, we have some general industrial zoned areas at the Corson, at Corson, where we have like the Midwest railcar where they're, you know, repairing heavy equipment. We have some, that, this, the primary, that's primarily the largest location that you're going to readily come to mind of where it's at, so, we do have some.
Scott, how about like that Marmen thing? Is that considered heavy?
I didn't, the?
Marmen, the?
Oh, yes, Marmen.
Wind?
That's also considered general industrial there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thanks.
All right. All right, so, once again, we had some questions, and now, I think what we need to do, oh, I have a question Scott. If they want to read the proposed changes, is that going to be available on the website?
It's available on the website. We publish a hearing notice. The, it really is a pretty straightforward zoning text amendment because it really just consists of three words, salvage yard and junkyard. And that's going into our existing framework for the I-2 zoning district under conditional uses. And we already have a definition set up for salvage yard and junkyard in our zoning ordinance, so we don't need to add a new definition because we allow, those are a conditional use within another zoning district. So luckily, we already have a definition for a salvage yard or a junkyard, and now we just need to authorize or consider authorizing that use in the light and, in the light industrial district.
Thanks Scott. All right, so that was first reading, and we'll have to look forward to having this.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we do need a motion.
I would make a motion to authorize publication of this.
Yes, we have a motion, and we have, I've got a second from Commissioner Benega. So, go ahead, please call the roll.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Peckus?
Yes. Passes, 4 to 0. Item eight are planning and zoning notices. We don't have any this morning. Item nine is petition for compromise of lien, and I guess I'll just go ahead and reappraise the commission with this particular lien application. Once again, remember, this was actually presented back on November 18th, and we wanted additional information from the applicant. However, the commission has been unable to make any contact with the applicant. However, I do know that, in the absence of that information, I do know that Commissioner Barth, you've done some digging of your own.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I actually did have contact with the loan company working with the applicant, and the process for them acquiring a property is not imminent, it's not impending, they're not ready. And so, based on that information, I would move to deny this, and I'll make an argument for that motion if I get a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to deny, and go ahead.
Well, I just think when this person is ready, come back to us, make some payments, it'll make us happy. And, again, when they're ready, they can bring it back. We don't hunt people down and dun them heavily for these payments, but this person's not ready, and we shouldn't do that at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Gerald, do you have any comments, questions?
No.
All right, so, we have a motion and a second. I'll let Cindy call the roll.
Kelly?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye. 4 to 0. All right, so next we have an opportunity for public comment. And does anybody wish to address the commission on any non-agenda item? Please feel free to do so. All you have to do is come up and give us your name and address. Is there anybody here that wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to turn to our regular business agenda. And item number 10 is to consider a motion to supplement $18,105.44 from the Highway Fund to the Highway Budget, ASN 17298, representing reimbursement from the city of Hartford for the cost of the chip seal of a portion of the road within the city limits. DJ Boothey, good morning.
Morning Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This summer, we, as every summer, we completed our chip seal project. It did run along the road that in Hartford is known as Western Avenue, and so, the city of Hartford requested that we continue our project through the city of Hartford, and they would reimburse us for the cost. It was a pretty good cost savings for them and just good practice to keep that road section on the same life cycle. So, the commission authorized a contract or an agreement with the city of Hartford to do that. Now, we have received payment and are requesting to put that back into the Highway Fund for our budget this year, $18,105.44. If you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Boothey this morning? Then the chair will entertain a motion.
So moved, Benega?
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second from Commissioner Kelly. I'll let Cindy call the roll.
Kelly?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Peckus?
Yes. Passes, 4 to 0. Thank you. Item number 11 is a public hearing to consider resolution to modify the county highway system, and Mr. Boothey is already at the podium, and it's past 9:15, the time and place set for the hearing. So I'll let Mr. Boothey proceed.
On November 12th, you authorized a public hearing for revisions of the county highway system, and I briefly summarized the process, and so you're familiar with that. The map that I have pulled up here is a revised map from what you had seen during that initial briefing that we gave you on November 12th, and this was part of your briefing memo today. There are a couple different revisions. Part of the city of Sioux Falls, I'll go over first, and then another section in the city of Brandon. This is the last page of your briefing memo, if you have your iPads and want to look at it on there. Here on the city of Sioux Falls, on the T.L.S. Road and near 57th Street or 41st Street, number 20, that originally extended all the way down to 57th Street, and you can see there's a small section that is not annexed just south of 41st Street. And so, the city of Sioux Falls requested that we remove that section. They have no plans to annex anything west of the Ellis Road because of sewer serviceability issues, and so that section of roadway is likely going to maintain rural road section for an extended period of time. So we have agreed that it makes sense to remove that from this proposal. And then we go over to the 26th Street and the Six Mile Road area, number 22 and 23. 23 actually stays the same, but it is going to be part of the conversation here. Number 22, you can see there's two small sections that were removed. I'll try to zoom in a little bit farther. There's a section right here, if you can see the mouse, and then another section closer to Highway 11 or South Dakota 100 there, that were removed. Those are, again, parts that do not have adjacent annexation. And so, in working with the city of Sioux Falls Street Department, we have an informal maintenance agreement at this time where they will perform all winter maintenance on 26th Street or that section that's 22 right there. And then, they have a part of number 23 that is going to be the city of Sioux Falls jurisdiction on Six Mile Road there. We will do winter maintenance on that road section. So, operationally, it really makes sense for us to continue on our county highway 119 through that section that is going to be annexed. And then, operationally for them, it makes sense for them to continue out on 26th Street to the turnaround on Highway 42. And so, during our regional winter maintenance coordination meeting that we had with the city of Sioux Falls and the state of South Dakota, everyone agreed that that would probably work the best. Those two sections, section number 22, have been removed in the resolution. And so then we go up to the city of Brandon and Holly Boulevard, which is right here, kind of beneath the 140 symbol. That section was removed, again, because there's no annexation that is immediately adjacent to that section of roadway. The city of Brandon is here. We have had a few different meetings with Brian and with their staff. And like the city of Sioux Falls, they've agreed to do winter maintenance from town into that section where number 7 is at on the west side, to make sure that we don't have to go into their municipality to do any winter maintenance. And they have also agreed that, you know, if we have any projects, like a chip seal project, for example, when we worked with the city of Hartford, they would like to work out some type of agreement where if we're maintaining 140 west of their development there on the west side, and we need to go into that section that's not annexed by the city, we would probably just go through that entire section, and then they would reimburse us for the cost that is part of the city annexation portion. So, they've been great to work with there. Those are the only revisions that we have logged in the proposal during this comment period over the last couple weeks. We've met now in total with every one of the municipalities and everybody that's been involved in this resolution proposal upon you, accepting these and putting them into a resolution. It will go to the state of South Dakota, where the Secretary of Transportation, Darren Berquist, will consider the resolution and then make it, make an executive order changing the official county highway map. So if anybody has any questions on those, or if there's anybody else that wishes to speak, that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Barth, and then Commissioner Kelly. Go ahead. Commissioner Barth?
DJ, so on the Brandon chunk of road there, what did they annex? Just part of the road or part of the fence line?
Their annexation limit?
You zoom in, yeah.
Yeah. Their annexation limit is this blue section right here, and I don't have anything that shows their actual annexation, but I do know that a portion of that, where the number 7 is at, a portion of it is the right-of-way, and then a portion of it is just only abutting the right-of-way.
How about the part under the 140 there?
The part of the 140 is not annexed into the city, and that is a state park, and so that is how they get the continuity for annexations.
Okay. And, if I may, so on the other end of town, when the city of Sioux Falls annexed Maple Street, they took the whole street, right?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, that was, so you've taken out that section where the bridge is and the road?
Yes.
And it still doesn't make sense to me why we're maintaining a road within the city limits of Brandon, but?
Well, and again, it's not technically the city limits.
Well?
I understand where you're coming from.
I mean, they have to send, they have to, for instance, for plowing, they have to send out to that section 7, right?
To this section right here. Yes.
So they lift their blade, go down the road, and then put it down?
No, and that's what I was talking about. Brian and I have met on operations for winter maintenance, and they will continue to plow from this section right here through the county portion, so they can get to their development out here.
What's the status of that bridge?
It's in pretty good shape. I know that the federal sufficiency rating is in the upper 80s, I believe, but overall, it's in, it's in pretty good shape.
Okay.
It is a large, it's a very large structure. It's over the Big Sioux River and?
You're not looking at a replacement in the next 10 to 20 years?
No.
Can we go back down to 22 and 23 then? Because our map wasn't updated on Dropbox, I don't think.
Your Dropbox map on the last page should be this map that we have here.
Again, because we ran into this out by the new school, we ended up surfacing a road that, only because of the school and the annexation of, is it Madison? Or Maple?
On, oh, on Maple.
On the west side, yeah.
Right.
So here again, you're explaining there was some sort of an agreement there between that and 23?
Operationally, for winter maintenance, we will take care of what is shown there as 23, it's Six Mile Road, and so during a snow event, our plow routes are up and down that Six Mile Road. We will keep our plows down, per se, even though we're in that stretch of 23 that is annexed into the city of Sioux Falls. And then, likewise, the city of Sioux Falls will be plowing 26th Street, which is shown here by number 9 and number 22. They will keep their plows down during that half-mile stretch in that small section as they go out to Arrowhead Parkway or Highway 42.
And the city's saying that there's no plans for expansion on 22 in that white county area?
The development to the north there, and I'm sorry, I don't know what the name of that development is, but they have had some issues with annexation. The city of Sioux Falls doesn't do forest annexations, they only do annexations when a developer wants to develop or wants to annex. And that development has been there for several years, and they have no interest in developing from, or annexing from, what I understand.
So, we fix the blue, they fix the non-blue?
No, they fix the blue. They fix the blue.
Oh, they do?
And then we fix this thin black line right here.
The blue is theirs?
The blue is theirs, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, you know, like I talked about with the Hartford agreement, or what we've talked about with Brandon, I'm sure with the city of Sioux Falls, we would do the same thing. If there is a overlay project or a chip seal project in that area, one of us, either the city of Sioux Falls or Minnehaha County, would take the lead on that project, and the other would reimburse for their section of the roadway that they're receiving maintenance. other would reimburse for their section of the roadway that they're receiving maintenance.
It'd be the south half then, is that what you're saying? If you had to overlay that section in 22, the city would pay for the south half?
The city would pay for the blue portion and then we would pay for the portion that is that thin black line, which I think it equates to about a half of a mile through the section that extends from South Dakota 42, which is the red highway right here, to this right here, which is where the elementary school is on the north side of the roadway.
They just seem to pick and choose what they want.
Thank you. Any other questions for, Gerald, do you have any questions for DJ this morning?
My only question is, are we going to put this in a written memorandum of understanding so that everybody agrees to what they've discussed and sign off on it in case down the road, nobody remembers all the particulars?
Yes, that is our intent. And we've talked about that with the City of Sioux Falls, more of an informal, not necessarily the city council and the county commission entering into an agreement.
Right.
Departments, the highway department and the city street department. And so myself and Galen Huber have discussed that prior to this meeting and we are okay with entering into that type of understanding. We have not discussed entering into that type of agreement with the City of Brandon.
Do you think that that's something that should be included or not?
I do, and Brian here is here too, and he might have some input. Brian did say that they are comfortable, the City of Brandon would be comfortable entering into a memorandum of understanding, so...
Good. I just think it's going to be important for us to have that clearly documented. Obviously, we never know what the exact future is and people change their minds about certain things. And if we can have it in writing, we know at least where we were as organizations in agreement.
Right.
Well, I just want to congratulate Brandon, the City of Sioux Falls, and DJ for working cooperatively and taking the lead on it. I mean, obviously, if you've got plows plowing down the road in any sort of weather event, it just makes no sense to have us lift the blade and drive another mile down the road and then drop the blade again. It's just, it stretches governmental credulity. I think that it's good to document it, though, so people understand their responsibilities. But I would rather have our street department work with our highway department and both within Brandon and Sioux Falls to get that hammered out earlier rather than later and not let the contractual agreement to the memorandum of understanding somehow derail the process. I think it's better to act immediately and we'll let the, we'll let the black and white agreement get pinned up later, so...
I agree with you.
Yep. So we, this is a public hearing, and so I want to basically open it up to anybody that would be a proponent in favor of it. Is there anybody a proponent that wants to speak to this readjustment of our county highway system? Is there anybody here? Is there, is there an opponent, somebody that is opposed to this changing of our highway system that would like to address the commission this morning? All right, well, then seeing none, I'm going to turn it, yes, go ahead.
I just have another concern that we, I'd like to have addressed, which...
Yes, go ahead.
You know, I think it's marvelous that we are moving cooperatively with Brandon and Sioux Falls. I think our agreement, though, needs to do more than just talk about chip sealing and plowing. I mean, we need to be sure that we agree on weeds, mowing, and signage, things like that. And I, it seems like that would be easy to put in at this time and, you know, I'd hate to have that come up at a later time and cause any issue. So I'm going to make a motion to, to approve this agreement, these agreements and to modify the county highway system.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Benega, seconds. I'll let Cindy call the roll.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Hi.
Pecos?
Yes. Right. Passes, four to zero. Thank you very much, DJ.
Thank you.
Item number 12 on the agenda is to consider a motion to approve the 2015 Minnehaha County liquor license renewal applications. And I'll let Cindy go ahead and make that presentation.
Well, the auditor's office has received the 2015 liquor license renewal applications and they have all been reviewed by the state's attorney, planning and zoning, and the sheriff's offices. And there have been no violations, objections, or concerns reported with these applications. And I'll read the list of those applicants. Triple J Inc., The Alibi, Baltic Corner Inc., Baltic Corner, Troy A Novak, Bottoms Up, MJC Holdings, Chasers Food and Spirits, Monarch Steakhouse Incorporated for the Monarch Lounge and Monarch Package Store, Norby's Incorporated, Norby's Rocky Run, Red Rock Bar and Grill Incorporated, Old 77 Bar and Grill, R&amp;K Landholdes LLC, Red Rock Bar and Casino, Garrettson Area Golf Association Incorporated, River Ridge Golf Club, MAS LLC, The Riviera by Rocos, Safari Bar and Grill LLC, Safari Bar and Grill, Sioux Empire Fair Association Incorporated, the Sioux Empire Fair, Wild Water West Water Park Limited for Wild Water West Water Park. And what we're requesting today is your consideration for a motion to approve these and then they'll be forwarded on to the state for approval.
Thank you, Cindy. Are there any questions for Cindy this morning? Go ahead. Dick?
Cindy, I don't know if you're the one to answer. There was a check operation two weeks ago.
And none of the county establishments were involved in that.
There were two failures. Were they in the town?
They were within the municipalities. They were outside of our jurisdiction.
So there's nothing to do with this list?
No.
Okay.
Good question. So, any other questions?
No for approval. Benega?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve. I'll let Cindy go ahead and call the roll.
Kelly?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Hi.
Pecos?
Hi. Passes, four to zero. Thank you, Cindy. Item 13 is to consider a motion to appoint the county elections review committee. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Wilson. Please proceed, Mr. Wilson.
Morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the commission office. And as you're very aware, two weeks ago, you had a discussion that was really a follow-up to some concerns that the commission and, and the auditor's office mutually had about some of the speed in, in counting ballots on election night and just a, a general desire to take a look at the process, see if something could be, be done to, to improve the process, maybe speed up the process a bit moving forward as well as address some additional questions or concerns that were, were raised through, through that process. Two weeks ago, when you discussed this, it was just as a discussion item. And the reason you did that at that time is because leading into that week, there, there were such a wide range of suggestions or ideas of how you wanted to go about this process that we wanted to give you an opportunity to really focus that discussion and, and see how you wanted to move forward. And again, the commission working together with, with Bob Litz, county auditor, this was a, a general direction that, that our office received coming, coming out of that discussion. And again, with that being a discussion item at that point, it was, the direction to us was to bring that back at this point for, as a, as an actual action item that you would, would consider and appoint the committee and take a look and, and answer some of these specific questions moving forward. And in preparation for your discussion today and your, your action on that, the, the commission office has provided a, a list of a, a number of questions or topics you may, as a commission, wish to direct the, the committee to address. And I can, I can go through those. That's certainly not a comprehensive list. A number of you may have other items that you would want to add to that list, but I would just mention to, to begin with, I would, would mention the, the bullet points that, that we came up with. And that includes, the committee will select a chair who would organize the meeting, call meetings, conduct the, the general flow of the meetings, receive a briefing from the state's attorney's office on just what the applicable statutes regarding election law and process are that, that they should keep in mind as they are doing their work. Maybe review the, the full process as it is now in the, in the auditor's office, just to have a baseline of, of where things are before you start looking at what you, what suggestions you may want, want to make. Potentially a, a technical review of the capabilities of the new, new machines that were purchased to just make sure you, you have a clear understanding of what, what they can and can't do. Review of the communications and data sharing processes between the auditor's office and the secretary of state's office, which obviously administers elections on a statewide level. And then direct a, some kind of a timeframe of when you would direct the committee to present a report back to, back to this commission. I will tell you right off the bat that I, I know because of the way you are looking at, at structuring and organizing this committee and because it does not have any inherent powers to legally act or, or is empowered with any statutes under state resolution, a state statute, you don't have a requirement that this, that that committee would meet in, in an open setting, that it, it could meet as a, as a private entity or, or conduct its business and then without opening those meetings to the public and then in, at the end, when it presents the findings back to the commission, present those in a public setting. I know there are feelings both ways on that. I've heard that among commissioners and, and the auditor. So that may be a, a discussion that you wish to have as you are setting it up, but I would just point that out as a, as one point where there is some ability for, for some discretion as you, as you charge the, the committee. Again, I, I would answer any questions that any commissioners have, open it up for your comments. You, you may want to hear from, from Auditor Litz. Prior to naming the, the folks that each of you have appointed, I should, I got ahead of myself a little bit to you. In that discussion last two weeks ago, you did say that the, the structure for appointing this committee was going to be that each, each of the five commissioners was going to appoint a member to the election review committee as well as Auditor Bob Litz and Secretary of State-elect Chantel Krips. So that, and that is one of the, the items that you would need to do, to take, one of the actions you'd need to take this morning is the, to appoint that committee. I, I don't know if you want to ask me any questions, if you want to open it up for comments from, from Auditor Litz or how you, how you would choose to proceed at this point.
Thanks, Robert. I guess, Bob, do you want to address, address the commission at this time?
Good morning, Commissioner. Auditor Bob Litz here and I just want you to know that I, I welcome this process and I think it'll, it'll be good to get this information out to the public and I think it will, it will be good for the auditor's office. We have nothing to hide down there. Now, that said, the, the fact that Robert made that this, this review committee has no real authority to issue any edicts or anything like that, it is, it is a very strong preference of mine that we be able to work in private. And the reason for that is I don't want people that are members of this thing to have to worry about what they said in, in a working session that may be an incomplete thought or not completely thought through or just working towards something, winding up on a blog or in the paper and making a big political thing out of something. There's plenty of time for the politics when the report comes out after that. That is the main thing that I would ask commissioners.
Interesting request. Any questions for Bob this morning?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Gerald, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
All right. Dick, you have a question?
No, just a comment.
All right, go ahead.
I'm done with, I think Bob's done now. I agree with Bob. I think it does have to be closed meetings. I think each of us have, will have someone we have appointed and perhaps talked to, but, but as far as trying to get things done, whether it's, I, I think they ought to have the ability to close it to everyone when they need to, if they want to get frank discussion about either the commission's attitude towards this thing or the auditor's attitude. But I think what we're looking for is an outside, and most of these people are, are very familiar with the election process, but an outside look at what, where some of the problems we, we've encountered, why. I think the commission should go on record as, as supporting closed meeting. And also, I would have a couple of questions as far as, is staff support going to come from your office, from our office, or where? Do you know, Bob?
You know, I, I believe it's going to come from my office as well as the commission office and whoever else might be an expert in that particular field or, you know, if we want to bring in people that are, you know, outside, people that would have something to say about a particular subject. But I think the staff administration largely is going to come from the commission office. Am I right, Robert?
We did indicate in the briefing memo that we would, we would provide some staff support for this. I, I think obviously there may be points where we look for input from auditor's office staff, but we, we will certainly facilitate and aid this process in, in any way we can.
I, I guess I, I think that this is not just for the public, it's also for us. And it's for Bob and it's for us to have someone looking at our procedures and saying, you know, is there something we're not seeing? And hopefully it would, hopefully it will give us some proposals or some, some guidelines which we could, you know, ultimately it's going to be the elected officials' choices. We've got the balance, we've got the budget, you've got the office. So I think, you know, we'll have to work together on this and see what they come up with, but, but I think we should look at it saying, look at us and see how you can, see what, see if there's something that we're not seeing.
Once again, I'd like to say that I welcome this process. I think it's going to be good for the election process in, in Minnehaha County. We're certainly open to any improvements that we might be able to foster out of this conversation. And I think just a general public understanding of what really goes on election night is going to be very helpful, too.
It's not a witch hunt.
Pardon me?
It's not a witch hunt.
No, sir.
Jeff, you have any comments?
Well, a couple of things. One is, I think we should set up a email address for people to email in with concerns that occurred during the, during the election process and ask for people to send their info there. I know I've received a number of emails from people. I've received quite a few comments verbally from people. And I think that we ought to set this up to get input from the public and from what their experiences were.
Thank you. Gerald, do you have any comments?
Not at this point.
Well, I, I guess I disagree with the auditor and I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Kelly. Jeff, you've often said that, you know, sunshine is a wonderful disinfectant. The idea of having a review elections committee set up to go ahead and to do something at all in secret is, I think, a bad course. I've been involved in two different ad hoc committees. One was the criminal, I believe it was a court-appointed attorney review committee that was chaired by Glenn Severson. And those meetings were all open to the public. We did the ambulance review task force. Those are all open to the public. I don't understand the theory why they should be closed meetings. I understand the sensitivity of the information, but when we're dealing with elections, I don't believe that there's any real secret as to having an effective election review process and to have a top to bottom review with having it being done behind closed doors. I don't understand why that should be the case, even if you're going to generate a report at the end of it. You know, someone indicated that, for example, Jeff indicated that he had questions where people could send in an email to have their address concerned. Anytime you have a closed meeting, whether or not that concern is going to be properly addressed, may or may not be given its due review, and I have a problem with that. Also, you know, I'm not going to take any real time on this, but when a statement's made that, you know, this is not a witch hunt and it's going to be in a closed meeting, the natural perception is that, well, it's going to be a witch hunt. So I just think that it should be an open process and I'm not going to support that portion of it. Jeff?
Well, thank you for those comments, Commissioner Pecos. I agree with you and certainly I think that if there is a, a person involved that's a county employee outside of the auditor or myself or whatever, that there might be room for a executive session if there's a, a county employee involved. But I think personally that I do have some responsibility for the fiasco that we had and I think if there's blame to be sent my way, I'd, I would like it. The auditor has said that we have nothing to hide and I believe that. And I think if, you know, if we, if we hide things, then we'll never know the answers. There will always be suspicion. There will always be doubt. And the veracity of the report that is generated can certainly be... that is generated can certainly be questioned. We, you know, someone else might say, you know, if we have nothing to hide, that's the beginning of the phrase it ends with, except for the truth. And if the truth would kill me, let me die. I certainly am not without sin and I, but at some point you have to take, stand up and take the medicine and take responsibility and that's what I think our committee will do.
Gerald, do you have any comments?
Well, I guess I see this as an operational review. It's not a personnel evaluation committee, nor is it a contract negotiations issue, which are all executive committee kinds of topics. The ironic thing is, is that I've been on many of the committees that John's talked about at the City Council, including, you know, the whole construction, the first group of people who met to talk about what's now the Premier Center. And we've been on a few other capital campaign committees and other operational committees and media has been invited and frankly, became an educational process more than it became a witch hunt. So I would lean towards making it a open review and anyone who wants to participate as far as viewing the conversation, that's fine. I don't necessarily think that we want a lot of input, except when there, it's designated times to do that or by email or whatever, or we will spend all our time off track, so to speak, and getting to the objectives that we're looking for.
Thank you, Gerald. So I do think that we need to name the individuals. Robert, do you have that list?
I do.
Yeah. Why don't you go ahead and read off the list with the appointments?
Okay. And again, this is the, the list of appointments that were provided to our office by all of you as well as the Secretary of State-elect Chantel Krebs and Auditor Bob Litz and-
John, I can't hear Robert. He needs to speak up a little.
Okay, can-
Hello?
Can you hear now?
Gerald, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. My apologies. The individuals appointed to this group are Sue Roust, Lori Hogstedt, Deborah Elifson, Joel Arons, Bruce Danielson, Julie Pearson, and Kia Warren.
Thank you. So those individuals will be contacted by our, by our office and, you know, you can go ahead and make those calls as soon as we get a motion. So I guess the Chair will open itself up to a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I might make one more comment and I do appreciate Gerald's, Gerald's point and we've had meetings in, in the past where they were open to the public on somewhat controversial things and people didn't show up. I promise you, if there's a, you know, there likely will be less interest than, than one might expect if we have open meetings. When we were building the courthouse, we met in Brandon and nobody came. We met in Hartford, nobody came. I think, anyway, I'll make a motion to approve the, the list and, and urge staff to set up a first meeting.
I second that.
Motion a second.
May I make a comment, John?
Of course.
I'm wondering if the task force would come back to us with a recommended timeframe on when these recommendations would be completed. I'd hate to leave that open-ended. I think that if we set a goal, that might be appropriate.
Thank you.
And I was considering something in the 90 to maximum of 120 days after they get their first orientation set.
That's what I was thinking of as well and in fact, I think even the briefing memo discusses three months, but yeah, so is that what you were visioning when you made your motion?
Yes, sir.
Right. And Dick, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a comment. I don't want to say, I, I, I do believe in open government. I, this thing has been politicized quite a bit and I, I guess that's part of my reluctance to, to honestly, the open meetings. However, I understand also the other side of it. I think we need to have this thing not get politicized and we need it to, to, to deal with the issues that are at hand. It's got to be an open and frank discussion, I believe, amongst the committee members, but without the, you know, without the danger of, of ending up as a headline or a lead news story. So I will support this. I think it's a great, a great, a great group of people to do this and I think we're going to get some really good answers out of it.
Thank you. Bob, you have a comment?
I did, I did have one more thing that may enter into this here. Starting probably early in April, there's going to be a school election, albeit a much smaller scale, but we will be doing absentee voting probably two weeks. And I think the start date, the election date is the 18th, don't quote me on that, but a couple of weeks before that usually they start absentee and the Auditor's Office will be working with the school, I believe, at this point on that. So I don't know if that's a factor or whatever, but just want to-
But thank you. Yep. Already starting another election cycle. Go ahead.
I certainly understand the, the tone of the comments I've heard from this discussion. Just wondered if you want to explicitly state in the motion that you consider of whether or not you want the meetings to be open, open to the public or not. I would just ask for your consideration.
Mr. Chair, I don't think that's necessary. I think we have an understanding here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would tend to agree, although, you know, if someone wants to make a motion, that's fine, we can-
We have a motion already.
We have a motion a second. All right. I think, I think we've already got that. All right, so Cindy, please, call the roll.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Benega.
Yes.
Barf.
Hi.
Pecos.
Hi. Passes, four to zero. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There are two members that were appointed, present in the room. I think maybe they should stand.
Yeah, please.
Bruce and Debbie.
Yep. Thank you for being here today and thank you for your offered service. We appreciate it. All right, so that was item number 13. Item 14 is Minnehaha County Commission Liaison Reports. Any reports? Go ahead, Jeff.
I do have one, I guess the Multicultural Center will be having a pancake feed on the 7th and I, I gave you tickets.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Which I bought.
All right. So we're eating pancakes. All right. Thank you, Jeff. Any other reports? Item 15, new business. Is there any new business to come for the Commission this morning? Seeing none, is there any old business? Seeing none, we do have an executive session item for personnel.
Make a motion to adjourn it to executive session for personnel.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Cindy.
Kelly.
Hi.
Benega.
Yes.
Barf.
Hi.
Pecos.
Yes. Passes, four to zero. Thank you and so we stand and adjourn.